I'd like to call the meeting to order. Heather, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Ms. Franklin?
Here.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Prethridge?
Here.
Ms. Ragoo?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mayor Snidely?
I'm here. And we will now move to the Pledge of Allegiance if you'd like to join us. You may.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Semin.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose that we add a resolution to item 4A.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we will move then to item four and 4A. And I have the pleasure of reading this resolution, which I will then ask for a vote. It's a resolution commending Glenn Ellerby for his service to the city of Oxford and its residents. Whereas Glenn Ellerby served his first term as a member of City Council from November of 2015 to November of 2019, and whereas Glenn Ellerby served his second term as member of City Council from November of 2019 to November of 2023, and whereas during said period Glenn has given his time, his talents, and his energies serving the city of Oxford and its residents faithfully and diligently. And whereas Glenn fulfilled his second term of office on November 27, 2023, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Oxford, Ohio, Section 1, that the City Council of the City of Oxford personally and collectively, and on behalf of the government and citizens of the city, express its deep appreciation and thanks to Glenn Ellerby for his faithful and devoted service while serving on the Oxford City Council. And Section 2, that the clerk of the City Council of the City of Oxford, Ohio, is hereby directed and instructed to forward a duly attested and signed copy of this resolution to Glenn Ellerby, and Section 3, that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. Is there a motion? Do we have an emotion already? Yeah. Let's vote on it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Glenn. You can see this, but we're going to keep it. We're going to frame it. Congratulations. And we have, while I gather, a couple of parting gifts. On behalf of the city, and you can dig in there. I'll give this back to you as I will.
Yeah?
Oh, wow. Show that out. This is amazing. And we don't have, in the city of Oxford, anything like a key to the city. But we do have a medallion that is given to only a few who have given service and are important to the city, and this one is yours. Thank you very much.
Most people know that when I do say things, I try to add as much value as possible. And all I can really say is, I love this town. I love the people that work for the town. And being on City Council is one of those things that I think every citizen should at least try to do once in their lifetimes, regardless of the place that they live in. But if you do get the opportunity to do it here in Oxford, it definitely is an honor. So, thank you guys very much. I'm sure I'll see you again.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thanks, Glenn.
That's one of the best things we get to do at the City Council. The second best thing we get to do is to hear from the Oxford Farmers Market. And Mr. Larry Slocum will give us the annual report. And I see a guitar, so I'm looking forward to it.
Yay. And this is, again, another participation one. And of course, every year I shamelessly advertise the market, so you're all welcome to come. And in just a moment, you can go ahead and pass out. Everybody gets an apple. Judy Apple from Scott Downing. And then Jennifer is going to hand out a market buck. Everybody has a market buck, and you can bring those to the market and spend it as a buck. But on the back of every one, you'll have, you're either a customer, you're a baker, a farmer, or an artisan. So on the back of that, you'll have to read, read that with me. So what's going to happen? So, go ahead and start playing. So what's going to happen is I wanted to make my report in the form of a farmers' market. So on Saturday morning, we have a lot of things that happen. And it starts out kind of slow and quiet, and then it builds to a huge concophony, and then it stops. So, anyway, so the farmers are going to be first. Let me find my farmers'. Ah, here it is. So what's going to happen right now is the farmers', if everyone has a farmer one. If you have, look on the back. Oh, is it coming again? You can press the light? Okay. Who has a farmer one? Whoever has a farmer one, you're going to read it with me. Ready? Here we go. Our farmers are the reason we gather every Saturday. They grow the food we need and bring it every week. Our farmers hope we will take home some apples and maybe take a squash. Take home some lettuce and maybe take a leek. L-E-E-K. Thank you. Okay. So. Now, the next is going to be, Judy, just sit and play. We're going to do our bakers. So bakers are going to be next. Bakers say, patty cake, patty cake, bakers at the market. Bake us a breakfast sandwich and a beverage to go with it. Or maybe try a loaf of bread or a pint of maple syrup. Market food is sure a delight. All right. Then, I have another guitarist who's going to play. And we're going to do our artisans. So anybody who has an artisan, say with me. Here we go. Talk about creating beauty and bringing it to market. Our artisans have learned to make what we want. So much beauty in their pottery, their earrings, dragons, paintings, and other items. We have a vendor who works from Miami, and she brings little dragons to the market. And she, it's just a beautiful thing. And the last, of course, is our customers. All right, so.
If you could, keep playing, you keep playing.
So here we go. Behind every healthy family is a thriving farmers' market. Our children learn about their food through our Sprouts program. We are customers, customers. We bring home such bounty. Yay. So, that's, that's the, that's how it goes. But now what we're going to do is our farmers, we're going to read at once. And then the farmers are going to continue on, continue on. And as the farmers go, then we're going to have the bakers next, and the bakers are going to talk. As the farmers continue, and the bakers continue. And then the artisans add to it, and then the customers add to it. And then the whole thing just becomes a huge concophony until we hear the cowbell, which I was supposed to bring from home tonight, and I left it on my desk. So now instead, we're going to hear. So, and that, of course, that, of course, is the end of market. And we all then kind of quiet down. And then we're going to have our bell call, bell cow song, which we always sing. All right, so here we go. Ready? Banjo. Oh, fiddle. Fiddle. Okay, good.
Okay.
Fiddle. Good. Here we go. Our farmers are the reason we gather every Saturday. They grow the food we need and bring it every week. Our farmers hope we will take home some apples and maybe take a squash. Take home some lettuce and maybe take a leek. Now, start it again. Our farmers are the reason, bakers, here we go. Patty cake, patty cake, bakers at the market. Bake us a breakfast sandwich and a beverage to go with it. Or maybe try a loaf of bread or a pint of maple syrup. Market food is such a delight. Our artisans, talk about creating beauty and bringing it to market. Our artisans have learned to bake what we want. So much beauty in their pottery, earrings, dragons, paintings, and other items. Keep going, keep going. Customers, behind every healthy family is a thriving farmers' market. Our children learn about their food through the Sprouts program. We are customers, customers. We bring home such bounty. Keep going, one more time. Behind every healthy market is a thriving farmers' market. Our children learn about their food through our Sprouts program. We are customers, customers. We bring home such bounty. Behind every healthy family is a thriving farmers' market. The cowbell at the end of market, we all are quiet. And then we hit the bell cow. The bell cow catching by the tail, oh, the bell cow. In the pale, oh, the bell cow catching by the tail, oh, the bell cow. Just like that? It's over. Jump in the breadbox, you crumb. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. Thanks for the fun.
Thank you, Larry and company. We appreciate you.
So I'm just here to answer any questions that you might have for us.
Did you have another good year?
We have had a spectacular year. We've had, we pay attention to the Butler County Health Department rules, which they like us for. We've had so many customers coming from Harrison and Eaton, and even from Columbus. They just come down on the weekend because we're, well, we're more than just the farmers' market in Oxford here. But they come down, and they like that. So we're seeing a lot of, a lot of great things happening.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's what we had. Bye-bye.
I know that it would be hard to follow that, but if you've come to council and you would like to communicate with us about items that are not on tonight's agenda, or if they're on the consent agenda, now is your time that you can communicate with us. If it's about something that's on the agenda, please wait, and then we'll recognize you then. Is there anybody who would like to address council before we get to the agenda? Okay, thank you all for coming. And I will move then to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve it?
Semin.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do any items need to be removed? None? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, we will move then to resolutions, and you may read the first one.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to waive parking meter fees throughout the city from 9:00 a.m. Monday, December 11, 2023, until 8:00 p.m. Monday, January 1, 2024. The two-hour and 11-hour restrictions for parking meters shall remain in effect.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Semin.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an annual resolution that we present to council and that the business community and the folks in Oxford always enjoy. It's waiving the parking fees during this timeframe until January 1. And remaining, the hours will remain in effect, but the meters will display a free parking on it. So, turn it over to you.
Super. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Counselors, any comments or questions?
So you don't bag the meters anymore. The display does the job, huh?
Yes, the, the display does the job. And last year, I think, was the first year that we, it used to just be the Uptown meters, the High Street meters, basically. And last year, after consulting with staff, it was just recommended to, to do free parking throughout all the meters to eliminate confusion. But we don't, we don't, no longer put the bags on the meters. We just have the display. And there will be some meters that, that, the old-fashioned meters that don't display. Nothing will be there. But we'll just try to do our best to communicate to folks that they don't have to pay the meter.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is something we do every year because a good proportion of our population leaves, and the urgency for controlling parking and making spaces available is no longer there. So we want to encourage people to shop local first. I repeat, shop local first. Always remember that. And I would entertain a vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Resolution is adopted. Read the second.
A resolution to amend the American Rescue Plan Child Care Forgivable Loan Program to be up to $10,000 forgivable loan instead of $5,000 with a cap of $30,000.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
Semin. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica?
Yes, this, good evening. This is a council request to change. So what this allows is for a forgivable loan up to $10,000 with a cap of $30,000 total for the fund for people to apply for to begin a Ohio Job and Family Services licensed daycare facility. And they would have to also accept vouchers as part of this program. So with this approval, we will polish up the program guidelines and get them announced and advertised and see if we have any people who apply.
Super. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this resolution? Okay, council, any comments or questions? This is something we've talked about before.
Thanks for acting on it so quickly. And the biggest reason why this came about is someone who has a daycare said $5,000 will do nothing. So at least $10,000 will hopefully encourage people who are on the brink of starting.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution's adopted. You can read the third.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a $30,000 grant from the Ohio Department of Development Tech Cred Program to train staff on Microsoft 365 fundamentals as part of a cybersecurity prevention strategy.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
Semin. Second.
Thank you. And Jessica, you're going to?
Yes, the resolution name says most of it all, but we did apply for a tech cred program through the Ohio Department of Development for cybersecurity training. We are migrating to a cloud-based system in January. It's been a long preparation period, and it's time just to go. But as part of this, we are going to be training all of our, our super users on Office 365, and this is to accept the grant to allow us to do that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this resolution? Okay, council? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, and we'll move to ordinances, first reading.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3697, supplemental budget ordinance number eight, to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2023.
Okay. Heidi?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Tonight I'm bringing a final supplemental budget ordinance to you for first reading. This is intended to account for additional revenue, unexpected expense, and to transfer funds to assist with funding of future capital projects. Our employee benefit fund will need an additional $390,000 from the fund balance to finish out our claims throughout the year. We are adding revenue of $29,555 for the addition of property tax over our budget, and also an increase in revenue of $775,000 over budget in income tax for the general fund and $80,000 in the fire fund. Our capital improvement plan for 2024 includes a critical parking garage repair. The funding, the parking fund nor the parking improvement fund can fully cover the cost of the repair. So we are making a one-time transfer from the general fund to the parking improvement fund to assist with those costs in the amount of $350,000. We also included transfers of $468,750 to the capital equipment fund, $781,250 to the capital improvement fund to help fund future projects. The total capital transfers equal 1.6 million for the three different capital funds. This is equivalent to what we transferred at the end of 2022, and we were in a very similar financial condition in the general fund at that point. We also included $80,000 to the water improvement fund from the water fund and $180,000 of wastewater, to the wastewater improvement fund from the wastewater fund, again, for future capital improvements. And on the agenda tonight was a resolution for $30,000 in grant funding acceptance. We are requesting $36,000 in revenue and expenses. $6,000 is currently pending in the form of another grant. And this was all for training as you just passed that resolution.
Okay. Thank you very much, Heidi. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this ordinance? Because it's first reading, this is when we talk about it the most. We do not vote on it. We think about it until the next meeting. Okay, councilors, have questions? Comments? It's that time of year, and we always do this. It's the wrap-up to make sure everything is in the right column and the right amount. So appreciate you working on that, Heidi. All right, we'll move to second readings.
An ordinance to repeal the use of $97,750 of community block grant funds to purchase 601 West Chestnut Street and replace with the use of $97,750 of American Rescue Plan funds to purchase 601 West Chestnut Street.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jessica?
I have no changes from last time. Thank you.
So it's, plan's the same, it's just where the money's coming from.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay. Counselors? All right, you may call the roll.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Prethridge?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mayor Snidely?
Yes. Ordinance is adopted, and you can read the second.
An ordinance establishing the zoning designation as general business district for 6.72 acres of newly annexed territory addressed as 525 North Campus Avenue and 5186 Morning Sun Road.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Semin.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Zach, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Nothing new to report since the first reading on this one.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Okay. Counselors, any comments or questions?
So I framed it as a question to Mr. Perry last time. I guess I would state as a statement, like, I think things like this should come as recommendations from the planning commission. Perhaps there wasn't, was an expedience reason, or there were assumptions made. But I just think if we're going to amend the zoning map, it seems like the planning commission is a good venue for that to come through and make a recommendation on. I don't think it would have changed the outcome here, and I think the GB was the assumption all along. But I just think procedurally, that's the way we've always done it. And I think that that's not anything we want to deviate from. So I'm fine with it this time, but I hope that in the future zoning, amendments to our zoning come through our planning commission as recommendations.
Thanks, Dave. Appreciate it. Anybody else? You may call the roll.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. Ragoo?
Yes.
Mr. Prethridge?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Snidely?
Yes. This ordinance is adopted. And we will then go to, that's pretty quick. We'll go to announcements and communications, and I'll start with Doug.
All righty. Well, I'll make it quick, too. I just have one item I wanted to share with the public and council. This week, we met Jessica Green, Assistant City Manager, John Deathridge, Fire Chief, and myself met with Molly Hansel, who's the financial person for Milford Township, and Amy Butterfield, who is the president of the trustees for Milford Township, to discuss a new contract. The current agreement expires at the end of next year. The current agreement provides for a payment of $28,000 in 2024 for EMS services in the western portion of Milford Township. So I did provide a PowerPoint, which provided a calculation for a new contract amount. And that amount was $225,804, which was based on our 2024 fire EMS budget, which included three additional firefighters. The representative shared with us their plan to place a fire levy, a replacement fire levy, on the ballot in 2025. That's when the current fire levy expires. So basically, what they told us is that they couldn't do it until they were able to put a new levy on the ballot. So what we did was we discussed a one-year agreement then for fiscal year 2025. And that amount then would be $60,000. And that is almost double, of course, what they're paying in 2024. So I think they're making a good faith effort to pay their fair share. And so I'll be putting this on the council agenda for the next meeting. And I believe they're going to put it on their agenda for their December meeting. So we'll have 2025 settled, and then we can focus on 2026. So like I said, they're willing to put on a replacement levy to meet this, what I consider to be their fair amount, given the calls that are in Milford Township.
On behalf of council, I think we would like to thank the people of Milford Township for coming to the table and going through, which is a very difficult thing, as we know, because we're dealing with the finances to make our fire and EMS work as well.
I agree, and thank you. I'll share that with them.
Thank you.
And that's all I have this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Michael?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Chief?
Nothing, thank you.
Heidi?
Heidi, nothing, thank you.
Chief Deathridge?
Oh, sir.
Okay, Casey's not here. Zach?
I just want to extend a big thank you to the Oxford Parks and Recreation Department and the Oxford Community Arts Center for absolutely lovely holiday festival last Saturday. It was really fun to come up as a family, even with old teenagers, to get to see Santa arrive and the lights go on. And we had a really, we had an enjoyable time. And I know it takes a small army to put those events on. So thank you to the team for all they do.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Chris?
There's been a number of news stories about, about moratorium related to legal marijuana. It goes, the law goes into effect technically on Thursday. However, it's not possible in the absence of a medical marijuana card to obtain recreational marijuana legally. In addition, the, the law indicated that the state legislature had nine months to come up with a scheme. And I use that word because no one knows exactly what that means. For example, there was a committee meeting yesterday, and a recommendation was made to remove the provision for personal cultivation. So this is a very fluid thing, and I don't think anybody necessarily knows where it's going to go. What's relevant about this is that when the voters passed it, it was not an amendment to the Ohio Constitution. So it's a codified ordinance, so the legislature has significant powers to modify that. So I only share that, not necessarily, I know the council's aware of these things, but the public at large may not realize that this is still very fluid. In fact, I would argue that it's going to be more fluid than medical marijuana. It does seem that this, that the, the concept that is being put forth would be much like liquor permits, where one gets a license liquor permits, where one gets a license, there's going to be control that way and there is significant local control that municipalities believe that they will have, but that will be an evolving item to be discussed as the new year comes upon us.
Thank you for staying on top of that. Mike?
Just want to second what Jessica said to Parks and Rec about another great holiday fest, which is one of those things that makes Oxford, Oxford.
Thank you.
I'm gonna continue to say thank you to Parks and Rec for doing that and in a strange way, thank you to Mayor Snively and Vice Mayor Ragoo for being out of town because I got to help Santa turn on the holiday lights. Casey emailed me like the day before and said, hey, you do placemaking things, you want to come help? And I said, yes, please. It was a ton of fun to watch the, you know, get all the little kids really revved up and countdown and flip the big switch while Casey radios in the background to actually turn the lights on. But yeah, it was great and I think Vice Mayor Ragoo has described it as our hallmark moment and it really does, even without snow or with a little bit of fake snow, when you look out over Uptown Park and you see all the families having a really lovely time and the inflatables, it's truly magic. Which brings me kind of to my next point, which is that Councilor Franklin and Prethridge and I attended a viewing of a movie called All the Lonely People last week, which talks about the loneliness epidemic that we're facing kind of as a society at large. And so one of my questions was, we do a lot with creative placemaking and I think we make Oxford a very inclusive place for people to be, but what can, what more can we be doing to help make those events really inclusive for folks who, right, like maybe for, if you're a more introverted person, going uptown to a giant event where there's tons of people may not be your jam. So how can we really kind of address any loneliness issues in Oxford and thinking about maybe some of the light-touch ways that we as a city can do that? So we're thinking about it, it gives a lot to noodle on, but it was a really lovely event, so thank you to Oxford Seniors and the Scripps Gerontology Center for that event. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
I have a couple of things, and the first one is part question, part comment, and in terms of just property owners and housing, do we have, we do not have a registry, right, for property owners?
No, we do not.
We don't, yeah.
No.
Yeah, so.
We don't, we don't have a formal registry, but do we try to keep tabs on almost like as many people as we know? Yes. And then when we, but if we don't know, we use a good old Butler County property record search, which does list the owner of the property.
And then with, but sometimes people could be hidden behind an LLC, maybe, right? Whenever OSH had their last meeting, we were talking about, there's a couple really wonderful property owners who are very open to Section 8 housing and they're trying to reach out to other property owners to inform them of it. And the question was, how are they going to figure out that information? And that was the second time that's been brought to my attention. In my little housing cohort, it was advised to me that we really should have a registry for that being one of the reasons. I think it's.
Are you talking about for rental owners?
For property, mm-hmm, yeah, for rental property owners, yeah. I mean, just even having that information that is easy to grab, to know who's out there, I think would be.
Yeah, I think I could elaborate further as far as what we have at present. So we have a rental permit program whereby if you are renting property in Oxford, you're required to obtain a permit. So we have that information. We have essentially a registry of sorts that has certificate holders and responsible parties for each and every address. We're working on ways to make that a little bit more accessible. There's actually a rental permit dashboard where that information is, is currently available to search by address. So it provides a responsible party name and the phone number of the responsible party. So we, we have that information that, that you're seeking for rentals specifically.
And it also includes whether or not they've had a rental inspection and what type of rental inspection. So I encourage folks that rent apartments to check that list. Some property owners are not, for whatever reason, allowing us to do rental inspections and so it's sort of, you know, caveat emptor. And I might also point out that, you know, as a university town with a lot of Miami University students, according to the 2020 census, owner occupied housing were about 70% rental and 30% owner occupied. And we also have unoccupied housing, which is almost close to, I think, 9%. So we have a, a very high level of unoccupied housing, but we also, as far as occupied housing goes, 70% is rental and 30% is owner occupied. When I managed Hudson, it was, which is a much different community, it was about 90% owner occupied and 10% rental. So, you know, every community's different in that respect and we have a very high level of rental occupied housing.
So it sounds like there, there is a registry, we're trying to make it more user friendly? Okay. And then the second thing is that the Board of Trustees for Miami's meeting is coming up on Friday at 9:00 AM at Markham, next Friday, sorry, December 15th. The meeting starts at 9:00, but people should probably show up at 8:30 because who knows what kind of paperwork they want you to fill out to be able to make your three minutes of public comment to present the case as to why it matters to us for them to pony up, right, just like Milford is. So I'll be looking forward to that and I hope to see a lot of people there.
Okay.
I want to second the thank you to Milford Township for being willing to pay their fair share of the services that we provide. And I also echo the wonderful movie that we saw about the loneliness epidemic. Last week at the Interfaith Center, we had another living room conversation, it was about mass incarceration and it's a nice sort of light-touch way for people to get out and talk and it was a nice intergenerational conversation. We'll do more of them in the spring semester and try to find better ways to get the word out. At this Friday, there is a meal that's being provided for students right before finals week, it's called Unite With Every Bite. And if the students come after 5:00, they can grab a quick meal and, and then head out. So, thank you.
Super. Jason?
Nothing more from me today.
Okay.
So first, just a kind of question, we continue to receive some input from folks about the trail and, and can, can you just kind of inform the public about, so there was the, the joint meeting and the presentation on the Tuesday and, and then we had, or I guess the Monday, and then we had our council meeting, that's the last public opportunity for comment. Will the public see the final plans? I mean, I, as I understand it, those corridors were kind of confirmed and 70% designed. So, you know, I guess the question is, people will be looking to us and thinking like, oh, can I help affect the course of events by talking to my counselor? It seems like as though the plans are fairly well along, so I just want to be able to clarify to people where things stand.
It's not a simple task or an inexpensive task to change the alignment that's proposed. So the alignment that was proposed was done so based on constructability, existing right-of-way several factors. To change that at this point is doable, if council wants to change that, we can change that. There will be costs involved to do additional environmental study. We're using federal dollars, so we play by federal rules. So we are getting new estimates based on public comment and council comments of what those costs will be. And we will bring those back to council and the city manager and get a decision if we want to pursue alternate alignments or stay the course.
Okay, well, that, that's just good because I, I had kind of, it was my impression that when I hear something 70% designed, it sounded like it was kind of baked already. And so if that's the case, I just don't want people to have a mistaken idea of, of, of how open and fluid the process is, but it, you know.
And we will be compiling all of the frequently asked questions and writing up answers, like some were just questions.
Yeah.
And we'll be able to give those answers and then for those that were more like input, but not really a question, we, we do share all of that with ODOT in order to get our final approval. So it is far along, but we do listen and hear these concerns and if there's reason to spend more money to change it, we'll, we'll explore it. So we're going to bring you an estimate.
Well, and then. So one quick question, something minor like whether the trail behind.
Gardinia.
Gardinia, thank you. Gardinia is curved or straight, that doesn't require a different financing, correct? That's a minor change.
No, that's, that's minor, we can do that just in-house or with our local engineer.
Okay.
You know, this design process, like everything we do and everything we touch, we are never going to please everybody.
Guaranteed.
We balance many factors to try to arrive at the, the best for the most good.
You do a very good job of it and I want to commend you and your staff for the job that you do on it. I think that, that, I thought that the people who spoke from Gardinia were very persuasive to me at least, that getting the trail a little bit farther away and the fact that as somebody who uses the trail, I like a straight trail, I don't really want to go weaving back and forth. So maybe that's one that the residents can put down as a win.
And there will be some good that comes out of that, we can do minor realignment there. There was discussion of drainage issues from the farm field, all of that's going to be addressed with this trail.
Super.
Many positives coming out there.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, you know, as the, as the, I guess, to me, if, as the person teaches urban planning, I teach my students that there's a goal and then you present a variety of alternatives and you weigh the, the costs and benefits of each one. And, and I, I love a staff recommendation because you guys have put all the thought into it, I do think to some degree, the public could understand why, why something was not done if the costs and benefits are presented and they understand, so like, why didn't we do that thing? Well, because, because this is why. So I just think that that could be best practice. Anyway, separate topic, related to transportation, that part of town. In the news today, you know, under the inflation, under the bipartisan Infrastructure Act, there was a lot of money in there for Amtrak to begin corridor planning, for corridors that maybe don't have current Amtrak service or could have improved service. And states and, and partners had to apply to the Federal Railroad Administration for, you know, hey, do our corridor. Well, Amtrak and Chair Brown's office just announced that Amtrak has kind of prioritized a number of Ohio corridors for this planning study. It's just the beginning of the process, something a half a million dollars to each corridor, which is probably not a lot of money for this kind of stuff, but it's the beginning of the process and some of the corridors are, you know, the 3C corridor, Cleveland, Columbus, Cincinnati, but also Cleveland, Toledo, Detroit, also a new corridor, Chicago Fort Wayne to Pittsburgh, and also to the upgrading of our daily Cardinal service. So again, this is just planning, but in the way these things go, it's chugging along, not to use so many train metaphors one could use. But, you know, there are a lot of ways we could have not gotten to this point if Governor DeWine had not signed on board, if these things had not been priorities. So I guess the point is, and, and, and this is the beginning of planning, but there's a lot, billions and billions of dollars there for those quarters and improvements. So, you know, I really do appreciate all the elected officials in Washington and in Columbus who helped make that possible because it's possible in the future, we could get on a train in Oxford, connect on a train to Hamilton, you could go to Columbus, you could change trains to, to Pittsburgh, which is where I would go. But anyway, it's big news and also reiterates why we have to remove remaining obstacles to make sure that we have a station on the line in 2026. So that's a topic I look forward to talking about this year, about what it would take to do that. So that's just some news that hot off the presses.
Thank you very much, Dave. Couple things, I echo my colleagues' congratulations on the holiday festival. I think it's a really good example of what we do in this community to build community and there's always something going on in Oxford and I think that's a good thing. I want to congratulate Miami University's football team for winning the conference and they're going to have a bowl game. And I was afraid for a while it was going to be in Idaho or the Pinstripe Bowl, but they're going to actually get to go to Orlando, so good for them. Speaking of Miami and, and the comments that Chantel made about the board meeting, I wanted to let people know that the city manager and I will be talking with Miami about this. They have agreed to a meeting, they seem very open to discussing with us and so let's keep it a positive messaging, I think. If you go to the Board of Trustees meeting, they're used to people coming and talking to them, but it's good to let them know what the background is. But I, I do think that we are moving forward with Miami to try and solve some of that problem with the firefighters' funding. And one last thing is that I would like to suggest to my colleagues that this year we make a push for public art in Oxford. And let's just dedicate ourselves, it's a small thing, it's not as big as climate action, it's not as big as housing, but it's not unimportant either. And I think it builds community and I think there are some things that we can do. And so I think we should just decide, hey, this is something we're going to do and figure out a way. And when spring comes, we can start painting murals and we can have contests for murals and whatever else it takes. And so if there are artists out there who are watching or are in the audience tonight, start thinking of creative designs and places and I think we can make something happen. I think that would be good. If there are no other comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.